Good evening. Welcome to Speedway Town Council Meeting. I called the order at 7:00 PM for January 14, 2019, the council meeting for the town of Speedway. In attendance this evening, we have Counselor David Lindsay.
Good evening.
We have Jason Delisle.
Good evening.
Have, to my left, Councilor Vice President Jeff Matthews.
Good evening.
Counselor Gary Rakes.
Good evening.
Town Manager Jacob Blaisdell.
Good evening, Speedway.
And our Town Attorney Bob Clutter.
How do you do?
This evening, if everyone please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next on the agenda are the approvals for the minutes. We have those posted for Town Council Meeting, December 10, 2018. Any adjustments to those meetings or to those minutes? Hearing none. Next, we have the minutes for the approval for Town Council Meeting for December 26, 2018. Any adjustments? Hearing none, those are approved as well. Next on the agenda, item four of the appointments for Speedway Boards and Commissions. We have a few of those left still from the end of the year. This evening, we're going to do two, one for arts and one for park, I believe. So we'll do arts first.
Madam President, I would like to nominate Kirsten Cleveland for the Arts Council.
Madam President, I move that nominations be closed.
I actually have one more.
We're just doing Arts Council.
Are we just doing Arts?
Yeah, just do arts for now.
Okay. Second?
Thank you. Okay, nominations are closed for the arts. And we have the one nomination of Christian Cleveland for arts. Any question from the public? Any question from counselors? Take a vote. All those in favor of approving Christian Cleveland to the Arts Board and Commission, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Approved five zero. Now, we'll do the parks.
I would like to nominate Crystal DeValle for the Parks Board.
Madam President, I'd like to close nominations.
Second.
Okay, we have a nomination for Parks Board, and nominations are closed. We have any questions from the, those attending this evening for our nomination for Crystal DeValle for the parks? Seeing none, we'll take any questions from town counselors. Take a vote. All those in favor of approving Kristen DeValle to the Parks Board, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Approved five zero. Next is the approvals on the on-call service agreements for American Structure Point, Commonwealth, Fleas, Kessler, and Westler Engineering. Jacob?
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. So, we very frequently approve on-call agreements with different engineering firms, which allows us to do small projects rather quickly to get things handled. And we've typically done them more on a rolling basis, so something will come up and we'll want to enter into an agreement with a engineering firm, and we will. And there's not always a lot of consistency, some have different amounts, some expire at different times and don't expire at all. This year, we thought we would kind of get our arms around the process a little bit more and kind of compare everything together and do one approval for the agreements for the year. All of the agreements have a cap of 25,000 or less, and they all expire at the end of the year. So, we view this as a process where we'll get together and periodically during the year, but especially at the end of the year, to kind of see where we're at, what our needs are for the following year, and just make sure that we understand that where the agreements are at, where we're spending money, and just have a little more control over the process. I'm not going to sit here and guarantee that we won't have anything that comes up that specializes that we would add a firm, but we, at least at the beginning, wanted to kind of get our arms around the firms that we've been using and kind of start the year off with a fresh slate. So, with that, we would appreciate your approval.
Madam Fisher, or Madam President, I move that we approve the on-call agreements as presented by our Town Manager.
Second.
We have a first and a second for the approvals on the on-call services for the five engineers or corporations that we have listed here. Any questions from our public? Any comments? Any questions or comments from counselors?
I do have one on the Fleas and Vanderbrink in the, I can't talk, the Fleas and Vanderbrink Agreement. It shows under owner representative, it lists the Director of Public Works. Should that not be Town Manager listed there?
Yeah, thank you, Counsel Lindsay. We will strike that so that it lists the Town Manager. And it's struck in the agreement that you guys will sign, and then we'll have a clean copy of that for the final version of the agreement.
So, we need to make an amendment?
So, I think it's appropriate for me to amend my amendment, or amend my motion to reflect what Jacob just described as changing the Fleas-Vanderbrink Engineering Agreement.
Second.
Okay, any other questions from the counselors? So, at this time, we'll go ahead and take a vote for the approvals on the on-call service agreements with the amendment to the Fleas and Vanderbrink, changing it to read the Town Manager versus the Public Works Manager. So, all those in favor of approving these, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Approved five zero with the amendment. Next is Resolution 2019-1, a resolution to the town of Speedway. Town Speedway, Indiana, approved an amendment to lease among the Speedway Municipality Facility Buildings Corporation, a leaseor, and the Town of Speedway Redevelopment Commission and Willshaw LLC as leasee. And we have Tim Groff.
Good evening, Council. The resolution before you is a continuation of the entire Willshaw process. Back in late 2017, we had renegotiated the Economic Development Agreement moving forward due to some changes, including the change from a platform parking area to a surface parking area, along with some other changes in there. Then, we kind of put it on hold. We had a few other adjustments to that that needed to be done prior to taking out any financing. We held off taking out any financing until we knew the construction financing was in place for the hotel. The good news tonight is, in late December, the construction financing was closed upon. So, we are now going back, getting all the bond documents ready to move forward with the process and the financing aspect of it. So, we need to go back and finish up all those processes that were on hold in the interim while we're waiting on that step. So, this is simply acknowledging, as you had approved the previous lease document with the Redevelopment Commission, that we had made that change, and that it's okay for the Redevelopment Commission. And then, the Building Corp also has one additional approval next week to go ahead and make that change. So, this is a little bit of a delayed reaction to a document, but we didn't want to move forward. We wanted to have a few approvals left until we knew everything was going to move forward and be completed. So, we're circling back, getting all the approvals necessary to move forward and close on the bonds.
Madam President, I move that we approve Resolution 2019-01 as presented.
Second.
We have a first and a second for Resolution 2019-1. Are there any questions or comments from the public? Any questions or comments from counselors? Did this go through approval for, with SRC two?
It will next Tuesday is our meeting, and we have a Building Corp meeting scheduled for 5:00, and then the SRC meeting will be at 6:00. And we have an approval at each to finish up all the documentation.
Okay. There are no other questions, we'll take a vote. All those in favor of approving Resolution 2019-1, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Resolution 2019-1 approved, five zero. Next are the claims and the utility adjustments. And Monty is not here this evening, so everyone should have a copy of those claims for December 22 through January 11 of 2019. I think there might be a question on one of them, but we need a motion.
Madam President, I approve that we, I move that we approve the claims as presented.
Second.
Okay, we have a first and a second for the claims presented to us by our Clerk Treasurer, who is absent this evening. Any questions from the public? Questions from the counselors?
I did have a question. Thank you. At the bottom of page 15, fourth item up, there's a purchase of a vehicle, or it looks like purchase of a vehicle. Monty's not here this evening, and I talked to the department head for this particular item, and I would suggest that we not pay that item in the total of $23,774.25. Or not approve the, that until we hear more information from Monty, because it doesn't seem to apply or something.
It's not right?
Not right there. So, maybe it is, and we'll just approve it at the next meeting, but it's just my recommendation.
Okay.
If, Chief, is there a car that was damaged that was replaced?
No. Well, that's a Jeep Cherokee.
Okay. It was a Jeep, Chrysler Jeep.
Right.
Okay.
This was a dealership, Town and Country Chrysler Jeep. Was there any repair done to any police vehicle?
Not that.
I mean, $23,774 is a bit of an excessive amount for a repair, so.
Correct.
Okay, all right, fair enough.
So, we'll just amend your.
If we got a Jeep, I haven't seen it.
Want to amend your.
So, I will, I make a motion that we approve the claims as presented with the exemption of the line item on page 15, which includes the Town and Country Chrysler Jeep line item for $23,774.25.
Second.
Okay, so, first and a second on an amendment for approving the claims, removing item page 15 for the Town and Country, $23,774.25. All those in favor of approving the claims, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Claims approved with that amendment, five zero. Adjustments? We have one page of adjustments with, one adjustment, it looks like, for the same time period of December 22 through January 11.
Madam President, I make a motion we approve the utility adjustments as presented this evening.
Second.
Okay, first and a second for approval of the utility adjustments. Any comments from the public? Any comments from counselors? Hearing none, we'll take a vote. All those in favor of approving the adjustments for January or December 22 to January 11, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Adjustments approved, five zero. Next up are reports from our department heads. The economic developer, Tim Groff.
Good evening, again. Pretty short tonight. I already mentioned the Willshaw project. They're hoping, based on weather, that we can do pre-con with Wilhelm, who will be the construction agent on the hotel portion. They'd still like to mobilize by the end of the month. I have a feeling it'll be more into February, but we plan on meeting with them very soon to kind of go over the plans and a lot of logistics now that the apartments are going to be opening hopefully in March here, and, which will also open up the parking lot and our parking spaces, that we'll have to coordinate those efforts. So, instead of one construction site, we have one next to an open one. So, we're anticipating that, and we'll just take some coordination on all parties. 1300 Black, we've kind of blocked off where we did the demo. We were hoping that the environmental cleanup would be going already. We're having a little trouble getting approval downstate at item, so we're working through that. We hope that we can still start that cleanup efforts really soon in the interim. The parking lot's back open, and the employees can park in that area until we can get it moving. We hope that'll happen sooner than later. Beyond that, there's a slight, I think the last time I talked about the courtyard by Marriott, it was going to open in mid-February. It looks like it's, they're shooting now for later February, if not beginning of March. They're just a little behind schedule on construction. They had some changes. So, everything looks nice and it's coming along. They just need a little bit of extra time to finish everything up. I'll be sure to report back when I get a firm date of when they're planning on doing a ribbon cutting and opening up. Any other questions?
Except.
Thank you.
Next is Police Chief Jim Campbell.
First of all, you know, the department is in the process for applicants for the Speedway Police Department. You know, those have been open. It will actually close on February 1. You can, you can go online, and you know, it's a pre-application, but if you go to the town website, that application's online, or you obviously can stop by and pick one up at, you know, at the police station. So, we currently have probably 55, 60 applicants. And in this day and age, when it's kind of hard to get applicants, you know, we feel pretty good about that. And looking at some of the ones that have turned them in, you know, we seem to have some pretty good prospects at this point. Secondly, and Norm's not here to enjoy this, but 2018, the pharmaceuticals, 416 pounds of pharmaceuticals have been turned in to us over the 2018. Lastly, the, you know, the public safety meetings, I've told you, the race is coming. We issued the dates for the whole year for our police meetings. The first public safety meeting is February 5, and, you know, we send out notices, anybody's welcome to come. You know, we think that's our opportunity if the public has questions or, you know, want to bring up issues. It's usually pretty well attended, but it's an opportunity to hear what various agencies, departments, you know, are doing in the 500. And it coincides with our law enforcement meetings, which are earlier in that same day. So, that's all I got.
Questions? Thanks, Chief.
Thank you.
Next is Fire Chief Christopher Milhorne.
Not a lot from us on the fire side. We're working on our year-end stats. We're going to be compiling that and get that sent to you guys pretty soon. Chief Fishburne and myself, we recently went over to an IFD station, and we took a look at one of their, it's called a plume vent system. It's direct exhaust venting. It's part of our cancer initiative. Basically, it's a, as basic as I can make it, is a hose with piping, and it filters it out, and it takes all the exhaust out of the bay. So, that's a big deal for us. It's part of our grant that we received last year, so we're looking at that. We should have something hopefully in the next, hoping to get something done in the next couple of months, so on that. We are going to have a hiring process in February. Our current list expires April 1. It was, it's eight, it's good for 18 months, and our list is up April 1, so we're going to start something probably in February. Lastly, we have our work performance evaluations and physicals coming up in February and March. So, that's all I have. Unless you have any questions.
Real quick, Chris, can you talk a little bit about what you're looking for in applicants and who can apply and who's eligible and that sort of thing?
Um, yeah, you have to be 18, actually 21. I'm sorry, you have to be 21. Our last process, we asked that everyone be an EMT already. I'm guessing it'll be more of this, we'll probably ask that same qualification again. Just 21 and high school diploma. So, all right.
Anything else? Thank you.
All right, thank you very much.
Next is Public Works Director, Wendell Walters.
Hey, Wendell, before you start here, no, come on up, but did you, did you buy a Jeep and blame it on the police department?
No, I told Jim I didn't have it.
Okay, all right.
They've been generous helping me out, so I don't get new stuff. Good evening, Council. Just some quick notes on your department's utility-wise. I just want to say a big thank you to the street department with seven and a half inches of snow over the weekend, and the other departments that assisted us in getting the Mother Nature cleaned up. So, a 24-hour period, we moved seven and a half inches around town and got it cleared up. I think we didn't get any phone calls, so everything went pretty good. So, thank you to those guys. Yard waste run two weeks at the first of the year. It is completed now until April, the first full week of April. They had picked up about 18 tons of product. That's basically two loads to our dump site over that two-week period. So, we got Christmas trees. I still see Christmas trees out, and the crews will pick them up, but we tried to put out a schedule so we can get it all done, because they go into winter work, and sometimes we don't have time to get back around to get those. So, we will try our best, or they will try their best. On your water department, we had our first main break of 2019 this morning on 25th Street for the year. Last year of 2018, we had 29 main, or 28 main breaks. So, the crews are taking care of business on that part. The hydrants that were out of service have now all been replaced. That was six hydrants that were damaged or identified hit or anything, so everything's back up to speed. Hopefully, we keep it that way. We have ongoing maintenance at the plant. With me kind of helping out, filling in down there, we're going through the building and getting things back in line, finding products that are not in use anymore. We had Board of Health that come through. They identified some items, so we're going through that checklist and getting everything back in shape, and they will come back and revisit us on that. Building lights is ongoing. We're like 90% complete on that. It makes a tremendous difference outside and inside. We're still doing security upgrades with the lighting, the gates. We have a, we're doing a lock system next, because we identified that we have 15 keys to try and get around that complex, so we're going to cut it down where it's more controllable. Plus, we're putting in some panic hardware in some hazardous areas that have been identified as a need. So, those things will be happening in the next few weeks. Then, on to the public works. We are reviewing, talking with Jacob, and trying to get our 2019 projects up and running. We have a grant opportunity once again. So, once Jacob runs with the council, get approval and everything, I'd like to start applying on that grant. This year, we're going to look at going for $430,000 to match what we have to use on our local projects this year. We're also reviewing DPW Indy plans for the repave and resurfacing of Carzill Road and 16th Street. We've found a couple of items that we've sent back to get addressed, some striping on crosswalk areas, some ADA issues. So, we're waiting for a response back from them. Then, that will go out bid, March, April, for summer work. And just, we're starting to do different types of training, safety training, everything that relates to our departments. Public Safety's had these programs for a while. Talking with Jacob, we've identified some things that we've been lacking in, and we're going to beef them up. So, tomorrow will be our first session. Working with the police department, they're going to help us in our first event. The cable guys are going to help us record it, so I can take it to our other departments and start our training. Working with our insurance companies, they have a lot of programs that are available to us, so we're going to start taking advantage of those also. So, a lot of different things going on, and all departments are working good, and appreciate it. Happy New Year.
Wendell, I have one question.
Yes, sir.
Sorry. Actually, two.
I thought I was gone.
Yeah, I know. The water main breaks that you've repaired, there's some that still have the berries around them, and on 30th Street, was that a repair that the town made for the two big areas there?
Yes. What has happened is, we've went back and got our asphalt and our concrete back together. With it being so wet and stuff, we don't want to tear up more property with the dirt work, because where you're talking, that is all dirt work. So, once it dries out or freezes hard enough, we can get equipment in there, we'll start grading it back down. Then, in the spring, we'll seat it, blanket, get it to come back and stuff.
Because the one on Parkwood, the actual sidewalk, the nice.
Yes, the crosswalk area, yes.
That had to be removed, because I stopped by and you didn't want to do that, but looked like you had to?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, those are things that we work on. We've got every asphalt and concrete repair and sidewalk that we've tore up, hydrants or whatever, main breaks. We have the last section on Parkwood to do that back together, and weather permitting, we'll get that formed up and get that back together too.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Wendell. Last is Parks and Recreation Director Tammy Smith.
First of all, it's that time of year, I'm seeking sponsorships for the concerts, so if any business owners are out there that would like to support our town with some donations to the parks to pay for our free concerts, that would be awesome if they could send me contact information to my email, tsmith@speedwayin.gov. I'd really appreciate it. I can reach out to them with our sponsorship package. The other thing I wanted to mention was our Winter Wonderland Prince and Princess Ball that's coming up February 2. We're getting some great feedback on that. I've already been getting quite a few registrations. People are getting excited about it. I'm excited about putting it on, and I really appreciate the relationship we have with Speedway Schools, being able to let us use the cafeteria since we don't have a dedicated parks facility. So, I'm excited about turning the cafeteria into a Winter Wonderland that day. So, and I reached out to the high school kids, had a call-out, and had about 30 kids show up to volunteer. So, I think that speaks highly of our youth in this community. And that's all I have today.
Any questions? Okay. Thanks, Tammy.
Thank you.
Next is a report from Town Manager Jacob.
Thank you, Madam President. Just a couple of things. One question I get, people are really excited that we've purchased the PNC building, but then they want to know when we're going to move in, and say, "Oh, it's not going to happen right away," and there's just some curiosity as to like, what are we doing? What time are we wasting here? So, just really quick, you know, we're, we've got a lot of different folks that are going to utilize this space. So, I mean, you've got obviously administrative functions, schools, clerk treasurer, police, and some much-needed community spaces. So, we're trying to figure out how do those pieces of the puzzle fit together best within that building? And so, we're working on that right now. We're working with architects. We're going to time it perfectly so that we're through that process. They're working on construction documents for the month of May, which, that's kind of them doing the hard work and putting the actual documents together. It doesn't require a lot of feedback from us. And then, there'll be a little bit of touch-up after that. But then, there's a 60-day bid process for whoever's going to come in to have different contractors bid on that work. And so, then that gets you to about September, and then we get those folks working, and that's how, and then they do their work, and that's how we're getting out to about the middle of 2020 time period. So, just, we're not just hanging out, just thinking about moving in. We're hard at work. In fact, the group we have busted pretty hard to get the architects selected in December, right as everyone was trying to enjoy the holidays. We were scrambling, trying to make sure we could get together and hit the ground running at the beginning of January. So, we did that. We're on schedule so far, but that's the plan. And our, the lease is actually up, middle of 2020, the professional annex. So, everything's going to be on schedule. All the time is going to work out perfectly. It's going to be great. Just remember, we're recording this, so. So, hopefully, we don't have to bring this back up. Hopefully, I can say, "See, I told everybody back in January." And the only other thing I want to mention, a question I get a lot, I think with renewals, is what's going on with the Driverrun Ditch project and have they fixed the insurance? I wish you had better news. Unfortunately, we're waiting. As I mentioned, there's some folks that have called. Federal Government's kind of shut down right now, so not expecting a call anytime soon. I don't think the folks, I think they're important, but the folks at FEMA that review the maps are probably not considered critical, essential. So, my assumption is that they're not reviewing right now, unfortunately. So my assumption is that they're, they're not reviewing right now, unfortunately. We can continue to pursue that and look for feedback and try to nudge it along, but right now, we're kind of waiting for things to open up. So unfortunately, like I said, wish I had a better update on that, but we're still tracking it. It's still important, and when we do know, we will be using every channel we have to get information out. And if you don't follow us on Facebook, you should. That's definitely one place we will get the information out. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Jacob. Next is a report from Town Attorney Bob Clutter.
I have no report this evening.
Thank you.
I'm sure that comes as a surprise to you all.
Next are our town councilors. We'll start with Council Gary Ricks.
Nothing this evening.
Thank you. And Jeff Matthews.
I would like to thank our street department, and Wendell, of course, but I think I put something on Twitter that there are some communities around us that, that didn't get their streets cleared until Saturday after six o'clock. So we did a great job. Our guys did a great job. So thank you very much for, for getting out and getting those roads cleared. I think there was, I think it was fantastic. Thank you, Wendell. I know you're not a big atta boy, but, boy, but thank you. That's really all I have to say. Thank you.
All right. Council David Lindsey.
I just have one thing. During the meeting, I was on the phone, because I was texting our clerk treasurer and texting the chief. Monty said that the claim that, or the $23,000 was for to replace a vehicle. Chief Campbell now remembers it's for Jacob McAtee's vehicle.
He got hit by a bus. Told him to, but again, that's an insurance claim.
Yes. So that, that was money that we received, and then that went to pay the invoice for, for the car. So I don't know if we need, I-
Motion.
Yeah, I'll, I'll make a motion that we approve that claim for $23,000 that was admitted on the claims. Gary, if you want to do the exact amount, that'd be great.
Yeah. I think the exact amount is-
Just to clarify, it was reimbursement, right?
Yes, correct, yes. It was money from-
Twenty-three thousand, seven seventy-four dot twenty-five.
It was money from the interns company that we received, is what that was showing.
I second your motion.
Okay, so we have a new motion for the claims. All right, so we're going to basically remove the amended motion and approve the claims as presented to us by clerk treasurer, including all claims. Questions? All those in favor, say aye. All right.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, claims have been re-approved as they were originally presented.
Does our attorney agree with that? Okay.
I'm working the logistics, so if we can use this to-
Use that in the record.
Make an adjustment. You guys are going to sign this.
I'm sorry, the record clearly reflects that you've independently also approved that claim.
Okay.
And I crossed through those that we signed, so. Yeah.
Yep. Send it back around.
Okay. That's all I have. Sorry for the confusion.
All right. Glad we cleared that one up. All right, Council Jason Doyle.
Just one thing. I just wanted to welcome you as our president for 2019. That's it for me.
All right, I appreciate that. All right, so last report is mine, and I just wanted to say that for 2019, I am excited to, to serve as Town Councilor President. We do, we will have two meetings scheduled for each month. Obviously, our first meeting with all department heads and reports. And then our second meeting will be one of those that will, we, it will keep it on the, on the calendar, but there's a very good possibility that we may not have the actual meeting itself if there's nothing to approve that we need for clerk treasurer, for, for anyone that, that we're needing to get completed. By doing this, this will allow us councilors to get a little bit more involved in our boards and commissions and attend those meetings. So we're going to decide who has some passion in areas and get them more involved and report back on that first meeting of the month on what's really going on and, and those kinds of things. So that's sort of the, the intent for 2019, for our second meeting, and we'll, we'll announce. We will, though, have our meeting in, on the 28th of this month, because I believe we'll have a few things that will need to get approved for the year, so. Other than that, I called, adjourn the meeting at 7:40.